Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the July 22nd, 2020 Spring Grove Board of Education meeting. Your call?
Stupi.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Sha. Eric Palagi.
Here.
Good.
We stand in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would want to see adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve? One second. Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Stupi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sha. Yeah, Palagi.
Yes.
Good.
Okay. Item 1.3, approval of the July 8th, 2020 meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Any discussion or questions?
Stupi.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Sha. Yeah. Palagi.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. We will now move into public participation and introduction of guests. Item 2.1, the Spring Grove Education Association. Having a debate here, the SCA, for an update. Item 2.2, the Spring Grove Classified Manufacturers Association Report. Anybody from the SCBA? I believe item 2.3, we have one prearranged speaker for public participation. And I'll explain a little more than everybody else and how the rest of the public participation will work in a minute. But Ms. Heather Bauer has requested time to speak. Is Heather here yet? You may wait.
Good evening, Heather Bauer. May you be very nice. All right. Spring Grove Schools are open. We engage, prepare, and inspire our challenge. Today, I'm challenging you to engage in completing a reopening plan for our doors as stated on the website. So that students, teachers, parents can be prepared and inspired to go back to school in either reopening or not. The district states it's time to be proactive rather than reactive. Yet I find that answer to be true. We've already changed a large portion of our plans. The plan seems to be changing daily, and it seems to be missing a big piece. What does the clarity look like if we have another pole shut down? Every surrounding district has published their reopening plan, some certainly less than a month ago. I've read through the Warren County Schools Reopening Agreement, which states each district will implement safety protocols to the highest degree possible. This along with other practices were identified under the intent. It is now July 22nd, and we don't know what the safety protocol are. I've asked the district how we're going to... In pre-pan watching? Um, majesty's working in Tiger. How we're going to reduce the cafeterias to 50%? And how we're going to tie up at times to the rival incentive? I was told that we don't have that in reach yet. For many families, the decision to go to person, to school in-person versus virtual isn't cut and dry. Like me, they want to know the basic every day in this state, three, four, five, six. You want us to decide if our children should attend school in-person or remotely. The third principle of the reopening framework guide is to provide students with familiarity with school routines to foster social, emotional, and academic learning. School will look a lot different this year. How can we give the students familiarity? We don't know what those routines will look like. There are people that would say they're not comfortable with where we are in terms of personal learning, finish to remote. Our online options just change us right now. Without my involvement, how will we all have that opportunity again? I considered enrolling my children in that online learning campaign. I know other parents would be completely happy to, but then I would have taken my name away from the district and getting into a charter school. They're all in a difficult position with many amounts. We must get ahead of this constantly changing governance in this state by adopting proactive reforms given out of this constantly reactive cycle. I challenge you to quickly complete this plan, providing fair expectations to students, teachers, staff, and parents of their charter school. Okay.
Ms. Bauer. So now we have a section of public participation for any of the agenda items that we have. So these would be the things post-work session. We will have a public participation time during the work session, which has to deal with the policy on face coverings as well as the reopening framework. So there will be an opportunity in the work session for people to comment on those particular items. But should anybody have any questions on any of the other agenda items, including the financials, the personnel report, those sorts of things? You can take those questions at this time in this public participation under item 2.4. Okay. So we can now move into the work session. We will start with the face covering policy that we were, I guess, learned in our last meeting. This is something that we have to pass as a board. So this is one that, and I'll let you start it, and you can feel free to chime in afterwards. But we got some guidance from our legal counsel, from Dennis Brin, who's been helping us and as well as other districts in terms of what this policy should look like. But also engaging in a lot of conversations with our staff, as well as hearing from a lot of people who are living in this room and others who are not able to attend, share their thoughts. And I think we've been listening and trying to take all that feedback into account and balancing, obviously, the safety of our students, the practicalities of, I shouldn't say, the safety of our students and our staff, along with the practicalities of what this policy should look like and, you know, and speak for the rest of the board. But I think that what we've heard overwhelmingly, particularly from our staff, there is a desire to have the face coverings be something that is required and find those opportunities throughout the day where it's safe and appropriate where we can have breaks from that. But that in the interest of everybody's safety, that we're comfortable making those required. And again, I think that, you know, as we put this as a board, I believe that we're supportive of that and we're supportive of our staff because as we get to talking about some other options regarding the in-person remote options, there is no in-person option if we don't have our staff. And so, you know, I think first and foremost, we want to make sure that we have their support and I am, and I hope that this policy achieves that. I should also point out that this is a policy. It is not the administrative guidelines about how this will work at every single building. This is a policy. Those details, as our administrators come back from some vacations this summer, it's important to get into engaging them and build out those guidelines at the building level and understand where those are going to look like. But this is meant to provide that framework, provide that guidance. Those operating guidelines and the administrative guidelines will come behind this policy as soon as we are able to work through those at a building level. So I don't know if this has, or have I missed anything? Is there anything else you could add to that? So I guess at this point, the board will allow for public participation at the end of the work session to offer comments. But, you know, a little bit up to the board, if you guys had a chance to review what was put out there and offer your thoughts or if there are questions, yeah?
Judy, I have a question. We've talked before, there's tweaks to it. I don't see it posted on the agenda.
It should be in the, the policy itself is down in item 5.3. It's not also posted on the board session, but if you go down to 5.3, which is where it need to be approved, you should see it there.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to review the outcome of the communication.
Hopefully it does reflect all of the conversations that we had. Any other thoughts from the board? Questions?
Yeah, the one thing I did want to add, because I know there were some questions as I saw some discussions around online, how will this be addressed with our students with special needs? And when we talked to our legal counsel about this, the second page, if you have the policy in front of you, there is a section that talks about following desert policies and procedures under section 514 of EDA. So this will be, there will be collaboration with your teachers working alongside you to make sure that you're doing what is best for your students. So there's not, this is kind of in legal needs, but this is something that you're going to work collaboratively to make sure that it meets the needs of what is best and fit it for your students. So I just wanted to make sure I answered that part of the question, but I wanted to make sure, so that was one piece that I wanted to make sure we pulled out and that those parents that do have students with special needs know that that will lead in the conversation to figure and have with your teachers and staff to work alongside you.
Yeah, I mentioned, you just say, I don't know how many people have had a chance to read through the policy, but just some of the highlights that, you know, effectively at the meat of it, that students in preschool through 12th grade are required to wear masks in buses and in areas on gathering areas, which includes entering and exiting buildings, hallways, lunch lines, et cetera, and in classrooms. Specific mask breaks in classrooms will be given for future direction. We also want to point out that there are exceptions to the policy and there is a procedure that is laid out in there that will allow, if there is some reason, somebody's prevented from wearing that, there is a procedure that goes through, I believe, the building nurse, that that would be out at the building level, that there is an exception policy as well as covered under this. Any other questions, any more comments? And I appreciate, you know, I mentioned earlier, but everybody provided for that, you know, both at the last meeting and subsequent emails since the last meeting. So I appreciate everybody taking the time off of their, their thoughts in meetings. We really have tried to take that to heart and listen and listen to our staff as well and reflect, reflect that in this policy.
Maybe there is one more thing.
Yeah.
The policies that we have are board approved, so this is the thing we're voting on. The framework is just like what the governor put in place today. There's going to be some things that we might, we might do it on YouTube based off of that there's, you know, it might get fluid or something, but the policy, this will always be in place and we might need to adjust what we're doing with our framework based off of what's happening in our community and in our counties. But what you see in the framework is that we're going to have the policy behind this coordination. So the policy is kind of like our idol, what we're doing with our face masks. So this is what we're voting on, but from my understanding and from our legal counsel, we're not voting on the framework because then they have to be coming back to the board every time that there's a change being, and they're, we're seeing there are changes that all boards are coming to make with frameworks because of the change of what's happening with other markets. So that's why we're putting this policy in place and that other stuff, there will be some changes and they'll be coming to us and they'll be giving guidance, but we will not be voting on the framework.
Yeah, that's helpful clarification. And we discussed that at the last meeting, probably good to reiterate, that the mask policy is what's required and that the reopening framework is one that is just that framework is evolving as we've heard and as everybody knows. So that's a good segue maybe to our, to our next topic. And some of this will be repetitive from the last meeting, but it remains true and I thought it was, was good to go over again before we get into some more substantive discussion about where we're now thinking, the direction, you know, the framework is going. But I wanted to start by thanking everybody that's in attendance. We may have, we may have more here in this meeting than last meeting, so. It's, I appreciate you taking the time to, to come and I know a lot of opportunity for people to share their thoughts on things here shortly. And I want to thank everybody that's, a lot of emails, as you can imagine, that we have been receiving on all of this. But I would say a couple of things in that regard. You know, first, I know that we're trying to respond to those as quickly as we can and I know there's a lot of very operational questions included in some of those emails. And I'm going to talk a little more about that later, about sort of our thinking because those are very relevant questions. I understand, as Ms. Bauer noted too, that, you know, people need information before they make decisions. And I don't really even find anybody up here that is going to argue that point. Three of us are parents and sitting in these apps and both, as many of you, in terms of trying to figure out what it's going to look like, and we have those very same questions. But I'm going to talk a little more about the process and be very transparent about where we're at in that process and some things that we're thinking about, given our current situation. But I wanted to thank everybody for the input. And I also wanted to say, and I've said this to several people, almost without exception, every single one of those emails starts the same way, which is really appreciate what you're doing. Wouldn't want to be in your shoes. Here's my advice. And so I think it's great and I think that's absolutely how this should work. And, you know, we think we have to remember that this is not a us versus them thing. I think we all want the same things. We all want answers to questions. I do appreciate it, some other districts have maybe put things out a little sooner. I also appreciate that a lot of the districts are having to change things because things are very fluid. And so where they start is not where they are today and maybe not where they will end. So I just, I do want to thank everybody for participation because it is important. And I want to continue to thank our administrators, you know, who have been living this topic for the last several months and, as we saw today, that the guidelines are ever-changing. And I don't think that's going to stop between now and the time that we can get to opening. So I know there's been a lot of time and energy going into those reopening plans and I appreciate that everybody wants definitive answers, but as we can all appreciate, it's tough to call anything definitive at this, at this point. So again, the reopening plan, it is a draft. We made, we made reference to that last time and I would reiterate that tonight, that it's a draft. And I know it is still changing and still evolving and we all want definitive answers. And I know there's some frustration, but, you know, I hope, again, you know that we're committed to trying to work through these, these ever-changing guidelines as best we can, make the best decisions we can for our staff and our students and our parents. So, you know, we're going to talk a little bit about the framework tonight as well as in some different direction that we want to pursue. And we'll get into that. But again, I can't stress enough that it's still very much a work in progress. It's marked as a draft for a reason and just prepare everybody that, you know, you probably are here looking for definitive answers, but we are, we are still working through a lot of that. So the draft that was released yesterday, again, it's fluid. We all saw, we got a new direction from the governor today. So again, you know, as soon as we publish something, we get more and more direction. Just this morning, the county superintendent's met with the health department and we're still trying to work through, you know, how we change, how we handle changes to the color coding and what that means. So again, all that to say, there are a lot of moving pieces and you can't stress enough that we want to provide definitive information, but we also don't want to, we also recognize that things are evolving and that we may have to remain fluid. And while that's frustrating, that is why we've taken this approach of trying to call it a draft and it will evolve based on feedback and based on as we learn more information. And so we've already talked about the mask policy and I'm going to talk a little bit here about some of the framework changes, including what we know and what we don't know. And then, just to, again, reiterate how it works, that we'll have some conversations as administration, as a board, and then we'll have time following that discussion to hear from anybody who would like to speak in attendance. If you'd ask, and I forgot to neglect that we mentioned this before, Mrs. Bauer, we'd ask them to leave those comments to three minutes each, just as we've done in the past, just in the interest of trying to make sure that we can hear from everybody. Please state your name and address, as Mrs. Bauer did beforehand. And note that you'll hear a little more about this in a second, but to the extent that you have questions, there is a strong likelihood that we're not going to be positioned to answer those questions because many of them are operational nature. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And so it's very likely we won't be able to provide a definitive answer. But we have been capturing those questions. We started to construct an FAQ. I know there's not, there's a lot of open items on that list at the moment, but just know that we want to hear from you and we want to hear your thoughts. But from a question perspective, you know, it's very likely we're not going to be able to answer those. Let's see if we can elaborate a little bit more here in a second. In terms of the framework itself, you know, I think we remain committed to trying to offer both an in-classroom and an online learning option for the 2021 school year. Obviously, the in-person model, you know, has changed a little bit given the mask policy that we just discussed, and so that framework has, has evolved. And the online model has evolved from the first draft. And that's in large part because of the feedback that we've heard from our community and from our staff. And I hope that demonstrates to you that we are listening and we are trying to take those inputs into consideration as that policy evolves. Our preference continues to be that we are trying to use our teachers, our Spring Grove teachers, to deliver this offering, the online offering. As you've seen in the last draft, you know, we're now looking at trying to differentiate what that offering looks like. The K5 offering is different than what is currently in the draft of the 612 offering. And again, that's based on some of the feedback that we've heard, moving more toward dedicated instruction model with the younger grades, where it is a dedicated teacher teaching online as opposed to being the live streaming option. The 612, you know, we're right now in the draft, still looking at a live streaming option where there would be in-person classes and then you have the ability for streaming to a student via watch home. To clarify, I think, you know, it's effectively the teacher and a smart board or something like that that they would be able to see versus the entire class. I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's my understanding of how that works to avoid these sorts of privacy or legal issues. But, but that is, you know, still where we're looking. But relying, as I said, that, like many of the other things in this document, that that is, you know, not subject to change and very well could. And so, again, that process continues to evolve as we work with our administrative team and work with our staff and here for the community. There was also a change in there about my offering to move from a semester to a quarter. I'm sorry, yeah, move to a semester commitment versus a quarter commitment. And I know I sound like a broken record and I don't look like I'm ready or ready. But I will say the whole semester or supporter thing is also very fluid as well. But the thinking behind that was that if we're going to change, make this commitment to offer a dedicated resource, that we would be more of a commitment from the families that are choosing that online option. If I use the example, if I made this commitment for an online offering, a dedicated online offering, and there's 25 kids in that class, two top of them are teachers, and then 20 of them in the quarter decide they want to go back to in-person, and I'm committed to, I have a dedicated teacher now left to teach those five remaining kids, and I have 20 kids that I have to put back in, that I don't have enough resource that I can adjust or space quickly to go and do that. So logistically, it's challenging when you make the commitment to do this online dedicated option versus the streaming. It becomes logistically a little more challenging to have people sort of moving between those options more frequently, which is some of the things that went into the semester versus the quarter decision. All that to say, again, that it's still very fluid and still very much a work in progress and there may be additional changes as we move forward. The other point that came out in the reopening yesterday was this, it pushed the commitment date back from the 31st to the 7th of August, you know, to allow ourselves a little bit more time to work through, refine these options and deal with the guidelines that are changing. One thing I'd like to say earlier, but I just wanted to make the point that, you know, a lot of the questions that we're getting asked and a lot of the things that I think the answers that people are looking for have to deal with when you get into living this framework at the building level. And we will not be at a point where we have all of our administrators back together until the 28th of July, our building administrators. We don't have our new superintendent, Mr. Hook, who's sitting here, does not start officially. He's gracious enough to be here this evening and gracious enough to take a couple of vacation days from Carlisle so he can work on Spring Grove on Monday, Tuesday. But he doesn't start until August 2nd. And so, you know, I do appreciate there's some guidance that's been given earlier, but we don't have our administrative team all together or not have them together for a while. And so that's really having that group together, allowing us to work through a lot of those questions. And so as we've had conversations with Mr. Hook and we've had some, some conversations with several board members today, I think there is a desire from Mr. Hook's level, and I think I would agree, and I'll give the board a chance to sort of weigh in as well, weigh in on this level. I think there, recognizing kind of where we're at and the work that needs to be done in terms of working out some of those details, I think that it would be wise for us to look at moving that commitment date back to allow our families a little more time to, or allow us a little more time to get information for, if we need to make that decision. But also, I think we ought to look very strongly at our calendar. I know we are currently situated to start on the 26th of August. Just given everything that I've talked about with the administrators, with Mr. Hook coming on board, I think there may be some wisdom in us exploring a start date after Labor Day that allows us a chance to work through all of the details that we know everybody wants answers to and so that we can answer those questions at the best of our ability and give people the opportunity at a building level to hear those questions answered. You know, I don't know exactly what that would look like right now and can't commit to services that have gained time, but our intent would be to provide some avenue, some mechanism where people could ask those very legitimate questions and questions that we all have. And our intent would be to answer those as much as possible in advance of whatever that new decision could be. But I think there's a lot of wisdom in looking at a start date post-Labor Day that gives us the opportunity to deal with the ever-changing guidelines that we're getting, to work through some of those operational details when we have Mr. Hook on board full-time and we have all of our building administrators back so that we can make sure that we're doing everything in our power to give people what they need to make an informed decision. And so it's my recommendation after hearing from you and hearing from some of the other board members that we look to move in that direction. So my desire that, that we can give you that direction, administration, to look and what that would entail in terms of revising the calendar to give us more time to work through those plans. And maybe a situation where we need a special meeting next week or something along those lines to approve that calendar. And again, we can give some thought on what that would look like in terms of the commitment date and when. We would then be able to commit to having some answers so that parents would have the ability to get some of those questions answered prior to that amendment date. And so it's a little different, obviously, than probably you were expecting to hear. But as I said many times, this is a very fluid situation and so I wanted to, if that's it, I'm going to talk to Mr. Hook and he'd like to offer your thoughts and, I know I'm putting you on the spot, you're not officially getting paid for this, but, you know, if you want to offer your thoughts about looking into that approach.
Thank you, Mr. Palagi, and Mr. Thor. First of all, I'm excited to make that in lieu. And as a community member as well, I've been living here for 17 years. There's no better place to be. So thank you and thank you, Heather, for your comments. I have been fortunate to be forward to do the emails just to kind of see a flavor. And I was able to spend a couple of days this week trying to get my hands around where we're at. I do want you to know that this is something that administrators are working their tails on. And I really want to call Carrie Hester and Scott Skidmore from New Towne Country who's still working. There's a lot of administrators who've been working on this plan. We've got some of the preschools over here that have been working on it as well, getting on vacation days. And so this isn't something that people are sitting on. The problem is, we're in a pandemic that none of us have ever experienced. I wasn't here, I know I'm old, but I'm not, 1918 is a little beyond my scope, you know, other than the history books. So we're living in a pandemic, never experienced, and none of us probably will experience it Starting in April, February, Wednesday, probably all the superintendents from Warren County have met religiously to try to get to some kind of common analogy, not necessarily... not necessarily the specifics, the commonalities on how we deliver these services. Everybody agrees, in-person, five days a week, that's what we want. We want to do that. I think everybody wants to do that. The reality is, every time we take a step forward, we have to take a step back. And so, bringing us to where we're at now, every district is a bit unique. From a district perspective, if we can put that framework together, we can get that, okay? The work gets challenging is at the building level because what Mr. Barton is going to be dealing with at the high school is not going to be the same thing that Mr. Francis is dealing with at junior high or what we're dealing at Five Points, the way we deliver lunch. Because not even getting down into those specifics. And we've got to get those people back to really look at measures and everything else to be able to give you those exact things. And I think you deserve his credits. We deserve those answers. And one, so my big thought with delaying the start of it would be to buy time. Just buying some time to see how it goes. The reality is, the schools that have pushed out information already, again, what's going on in Montgomery County is different from what's going on in Warren County or Butler County or Hamilton County. Charles went and announced that they're totally virtual, okay? It's a tough time. We have been working diligently. I know in my school, I'm still working on those pieces. We haven't worked any money to present that option. But it's fluid. It could change, okay? The governor comes out a week ago, four weeks ago with the new color emergency type levels, trying to represent what exactly does that mean? The health department, only the health department, actually Warren County, kudos to them. Get a real chance to shoot an email. Got to thank them because they have been shoulder to shoulder with all the superintendents every Wednesday for the last three months, every Wednesday, trying to get them to do it. So, going back to the date, I think it's a very good fact to move it back. Does it change a ton of things that we do? No, I think spring break, I don't want to fall on the same calendar week. You're going to have to adjust it certainly a little bit. You might go and extend it a week earlier in August, a week later, first week of June. But it provides us time to be able to get kids in school. It's not a bad thing. It's just not. Do I think it's tangible? I don't know that yet. I wish I had that crystal ball, because I'd make a lot of money right now. But the reality is, we have to have two modalities. We have to have in-person, five days a week. We have to have some type of virtual online option. We know that. What happens when we go to red? What happens where Montgomery County is, Butler County is? We're surrounded right now. We're orange. I don't know what it is. They update it once a week. We go to red. Today's discussion with the superintendents was, do we all go to the hybrid? Where you've got, some schools are going to do A days and B days. Some schools are going to do Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday off. There's several of those. So there's a heavy lean right now amongst all the superintendents in this county that goes to red. Again, is that the best thing? No, five days a week. Oh, hey, I want kids in school. That's what we want. Don't know if we can deliver when it's red. That's the million dollar question. What does it look like? So we got work to do with that. What's our idea is what happens if it goes to purple? We don't have anybody. We have to be in purple. What happens? According to say, it shuts down. Now, they're not going to tell you that, but I think that's pretty obvious what we're going to have to do. What does that look like? So my second question to that is, what happens if it goes to red? I heard it started school. Goes to red after school starts. If it goes to purple before school starts, it goes to purple after school starts. Because those may look a little bit different, depending on where we finally align on this. And give those details where they impact those questions. So it's a long way to get around that question, but I think it deserves the thought process that's there. Trust me, I sleep well at night until this time yet. I have a slept on, because I want kids in school. That's what we need. We've got to do it safely. I hate these masks. I hate it with a passion. Do you know what? I'll wear them back every day if I have to. If I can extend our kids being in school, I don't like it. Corrode, Bill. You want the kids in school, you want it now. But what are we going to do if we lose four or five bus drivers? It's a real possibility. Do we eliminate busing? I don't know how to do it. Sometimes our bus, our bus charter, we don't think about it very much. But that's a big deal. How do we, how do we give the same level of service? I don't know about you guys. I know where I'm at right now. I can't, they're hard to find. It's a tough job. What happens if we lose 10 teachers? You know, if you try to run those scenarios next to these, all the superintendents are bringing additional staff in. And they're actually going through a tabletop discussions and scenarios with all those superintendents, with the health department. And trying to, we're trying to throw as much junk kind of a machine there and say, what do we do? How could we handle this if this comes down to fight? I don't know what the next guy meant. I'd love to tell each one of you, you know, but I don't have it. What I can tell you is, the more time we have together as a staff, we can plan these more clearly. When it finally comes out, we still may have to adjust. Because that's what, maybe it doesn't. It runs the same type of thing that Five Points does at lunch. It may not, maybe it doesn't work. This one. They have to adjust, and they have to try to do so. We've got the kids, we've got the staff, and do the best that we can to keep it open as long as we can. What we get to do this year, how we, let's get this hanging up. Let's be thankful, let's hang it up. We can do this. This is the toughest thing that I've seen in public school. Here, I don't have anything that matches. H1N1 doesn't match it. I was here when that happened. It doesn't match it. This is, we're all dealing with something different. And it may not change anything until after, when I'm running the election, but that's a cycle. I'm sorry. But this is what policy, this is what pieces that are playing into this that we're now answering for, but we got to deal with it. Time is on our side. If we get time, it helps. It just allows you to see a little bit more.
Appreciate that perspective. Thank you. So I guess at this point, I'll open to the board. Thank you, Larry. We've talked about some of this, but being curious to hear, we sort of got the thoughts, particularly around looking at the modifications for the start date and allowing ourselves a chance to make sure that we have those details as much as we can, have them fleshed out before. We're asking parents to make these decisions. I'm curious to hear from the board and their thoughts.
I appreciate that. When you and I talked earlier today, I will say, hopefully, a lot of emails were from a lot of you. You guys did a great job of communicating with us. I've been in work for five years, and we've never been communicated with like this before. But it was just so respectful and informative and data-based. You did a great job, and you deserve answers to all of those. And like Jamie said, we just, there's things that we don't have the answers to yet because the administrators are still out, but you deserve those answers. So I like the recommendation of having like, whatever you want to call it, com-com meetings type things, either at the building or grade level or, you know, whether it's the other Super Five Weeks together, if there's a decision of the same, or building, a building, however they work it out. But it will be done to where we have the right people there to where we can get your answers. So it's not that they've been ignored, or we don't care, or we've done, we do. It's just that we want to make sure they're giving that accurate information. So, because I want to make sure you heard that in what you were sharing, that there's, we don't know yet what it's going to be and what the dates are going to be, but there's going to be opportunities, whether, you can email them, and they'll get back with you. But if you'd like to hear the conversations and explanations and be able to follow up with other questions once you hear the explanations, you're going to have that opportunity where you don't have to get up at a work meeting and maybe not get the answer right there because the right person wasn't there. It'll be specific to your student's age. So that maybe feels better about where we're at. Because as a parent, there's things I feel like I need to, you know, do. I have two that are still in the district. So, you know, three of us have students in the district, two have grandchildren that are in the district or coming up, like, ages are raised. So, you know, we get the questions that are out there and understand the need for some people that that kind of help make the decision as to whether you're going to go with Model A or Model B. About the timing, I'm from Michigan, where if, don't judge, don't judge. I don't have state, but I am in Michigan. So in there, we're a recreation state, and everybody starts after Labor Day. That's what I kind of grew up doing. And it's not what I was expecting was going to come as a recommendation, but I think with the situation where we're at right now, I do want to make sure that we don't rush into something and that the staff doesn't feel that we've really prepared them and that we have rushed into a decision when, because we feel, how does that feel? Then we have to do it. I'd rather just take that extra time and make sure that we're preparing those teachers that are going to be teaching remotely, they feel prepared. The teachers are going to be face-to-face, if they feel prepared, not just content, but it's going to look very different. I don't know if you guys can see what's been going on Facebook with a teacher and somewhere out east that is, they must be on the around town or something, but she showed what it's like for a second grade class of, you know, very good events being on like a lunch pit or something. So just a very different, help you kind of visualize what it's going to be like for our teachers and staff that are going to be here with our students, our face-to-face. So I like the recommendations. You know, we're going to have to look because the school year is going to look a little bit different, and we don't know yet what that's going to be. But I think it's a really good thing to consider with the continued changes that keep coming in order for us to know that we've got the right options out for you guys and for all of us, and that we are prepared once we have the final options in place. So I support it.
Appreciate you, Charles, thank you. Would you like that?
Yeah, I can say a difference. I also support the, I think, the option we pushed a lot off. You're right, I think, you know, my, jumping my personal opinion, but I think from my observations that Ohio, for the moment, is, you know, kind of trending in a bad direction. I read a little bit, I reread the governor's comments before I came here. You know, basically it was, you need to wear masks if we want school to restart. So, you know, to me, it's not a slam dunk at the moment, but, you know, even if we kept the start date as it is, the higher powers, the people would push it back anyway. So I think that's something to consider. And at the same time, you know, our brain power within the district is, you know, expand exponentially during COVID. And we've had a few folks working extremely hard. But as Mr. Lee said a little bit ago, once we get more and more people back, this is going to start, the planning and the operationalizing is going to happen much, much more quickly. And it's going to be answers that are not at the 30,000 foot deep, but they're going to be at, hopefully, at the thousand or lower. Where we're going to get some real detail specifically about your students, your building, your grade level. So I think that's going to help as well. But getting that additional week right now gives us that much more time to figure everything out. At the same time, again, what the straight-up said, today we're orange. Next week, if we're red, we probably have to red love at least part of the plan to restart and, you know, look back at what we need to do. So I think in the grand scheme of things, you know, going back after Labor Day, it's actually beginning to, if we have that holiday to come there. It's a good thing, and, you know, I think we'll be, and I also think that we're not going to be last to start to do it. I would be shocked if we were doing one on one accounting or elsewhere that didn't, you know, eventually get back. So I fully support that.
I think it's a good idea. We, it's happened before when we built this high school. We went and came back to school like a late night, just so we could make sure we get it. And everybody lived through that. Actually, I didn't, I don't remember any complaints about it at all. So it's not like, but it did my ancient time. I think, I think it makes a lot of sense. We're talking about masks, virus. We're all here to educate these children. And we need to make sure that everybody's safe, the president, the children, the teachers, the staff, administrators. But we need to educate these children. I see nothing lost in post-booking until after Labor Day.
Probably then more parents will say it.
Well, I mean, again, I think you heard, obviously, from the other board members, I think this is something that we ought to explore and fully to take it offline in terms of trying to figure out when we can get back together. Maybe we can call a special meeting next week. We'll have to work through those specific details to figure out at what point we would be in a position to have that conversation and that work has started, and some of the conversations around the calendar have begun. But we'll have to figure out what that will look like, when we can have that conversation. Because again, we want to do that as quickly as possible and get the information to people as soon as possible, if that is the direction we're going. So my preference would be to try and find some time sooner rather than later. If that is what it sounds like, if there's agreement in looking at that, to get us together so we can know specifics on what that calendar and those dates would be. We can, again, try to work through what would, what would the new date be for folks to commit in terms of the different models? I think we can make some commitments in steps about when we would have some sort of avenue for folks to get those questions answered prior to that commitment date. Because again, I think that all of us wanting to be in a position where we can provide answers, none of us want to be sitting up here telling you that you don't know. That's not a fun position to be in. And we want to work through those questions and get you the right information as quickly as possible. So if you can take that offline and work through when we can reasonably have meetings as quickly as possible to close down my calendar, I'd appreciate that. So I think we have, oh, let's go right to, if there's no other comments from the board or administrators, we do have time set aside here for a session for public participation. And again, as I said at the beginning, the reminder would be that, as you've just heard, we don't have a lot of answers to some of the more specific questions that you may have. But if anybody feels inclined to leave a comment, I mean, they've heard discussed tonight in work session, the mask, the face covering policy, the discussion about the calendar and the draft framework and some of the different changes to the options. If you want to share their opinions, again, I know a lot of people have been doing that over here now. If anybody would like to share their thoughts on either of those topics here during the work session, you do have time now for public participation. Again, I ask you to keep up to three minutes. A lot of Miss Floyd would be perfectly, just in the interest of hearing from everybody. You do have a lot of email attendments. And again, you know, just know that if you ask questions, that to get into that very specific part of it that we're going to have to just follow this way and answer those when we're in better position to do so. With that said, we'll open it up for public participation.
Good evening. My name is Sabrina Correia. I do that three days in the fourth. Wanted to say thank you again for your hard work. I just have a quick question about when would be an appropriate time to reach out to ask questions about exceptions for making like children on IP's or for a health, I mean for the boards.
Exceptions to what? I guess I'm sorry.
Like for example, like if you have to make a commitment by semester, is that child, may I respond well to whatever toys are being colored?
I think those are the types of questions that again, when we discuss them, we prepare to answer whatever that, whatever that, prior to that commitment date, you know, that there will be those avenues. And those are the types of questions we have our administrators act on that they'll be able to. This is like, I can't, I should tell you specifically.
Can I question at the exemption exactly is when would be a good time to reach out to those specific departments? Like maybe the first week of November, I mean August, right? When should I, I just don't want to keep over the questions because I know they're going to happen.
No, I understand. And that's where again, I think we would probably have a calendar conversation and get everybody back into one game. But I'm not sure if we're going to have all those details worked out by that one. But our intention would be to, when we're having this calendar conversation, to talk about when we would be in position to answer those questions. So I can give you an exact timeframe. But again, I think with our calendar conversation, we would include in that sort of the date that you're comfortable with, some more of the specific operational items.
Mary, my name is 2407, not reported, so I have a question. So previously when the survey got to the top of the board, they were extending the, I think the school day back a couple minutes. And if the start date gets pulled back now, I'm assuming that they're going to be.
Well, so you just, we're just sort of in initial stage of that. So I think that's probably what would be this next discussion, how we would get more specifics on the calendar.
A consideration that I would like you guys to think about is potentially how it affects graduation for the 2021 graduates, potentially. Another thing, I know I came a few minutes late, but a question I have about virtual is how that affects the gifted students. So will the elementary kids or whoever who are in gifted programs, will they be, will there be virtual, you know, things for them as they're in their gifted programs? Or will they be expected to go, you know, in person if they want to receive gifted services, etc.? So those are my questions.
Yeah, and those are the types of questions that would be a part of that. For the calendar, I just would say that as with any time we're working on the calendar, certain graduations, spring break, those sorts of things are always accounted for and always taken into account in these sort of calendar conversations and different. But those sorts of questions, again, if you're getting similar things in email and those are the various types of questions we're talking about. Then you can't sit there today and video grade it. So we want, you know, we need those sorts of answers to make that decision. And that's what we will commit to, what the immediate position to do that at a date here in the near future.
Perfect. Thank you.
I believe previously when we extended it to August 26th, we didn't have to add any minutes to the days at that point. We have, we are ready to go to school longer than we're required because the state requires us those three months. My try to that.
I don't agree with you on that.
We are significantly over the minimum hours, but kindergarten will be a little bit trickier. But we will look at every minute. But then there's the likelihood that this date will throw out minimum minutes this year. We don't know.
Okay. It's not like we're having it at August 17th or whatever, or first date to the 26th and then the 26th to September 8th or whatever. We are ready to go longer at most of our building day now. So really we're looking from the 26th and most of the days to the day to look at the difference in those minutes.
Okay. The other question that came up again, the high school crowd case was how does virtual affect students that are playing in NCAA, that are going potentially to an NCAA or playing a sport in NCAA college? Is it going to be?
We'll capture that question and say the other, yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's because of our state. I want to start by thanking all of you who do awesome jobs. A lot of work with background, I'm part of the team, our work's quite accomplished, I'm there. So thank you again. I can't wait to get a round of applause. I also want to thank for the teachers because you know, we are going to be at school where the kids are too. So I see it is clearly clear. So I don't know, we have to just get a round of applause. I have two questions. One of you can go to ask, we'll be talking here about that later. My first question is for K to five, is there going, for the virtual learning option, is there going to be a dedicated teacher that is going to teach all the subjects? Or is it going to be like two teachers, one focus, one math, a science and other focus on English and social studies? And the second question I have is if we are in school in person and if either the teacher or a student gets COVID, what are the current protocols of either that is a class quarantine or the group gets quarantined? So that should probably help us to make some decisions on how we should use option A or option B. Thank you.
And I'm curious, I was talking with somebody before we speak and if we could look at humor heights. COVID page has some examples and I know we follow the health district, but they haven't played out like, if your student was here and this person, or if this person was, he was diagnosed with COVID and your student is here, they would not have to quarantine if they were here, here. They would have to, just for a visual, and that was following health district's guidelines. So we follow health district guidelines, but it's hard to picture what that really means. So if we could potentially look at having some of that, because it's just hard to envision what this really looks like. And I have many old visitor ratings just talking to me right away, but I think that would be helpful. I know there's a lot of questions around that.
And do you mind if a teacher, is there a non-teacher or a teacher?
We've captured the question. Sorry, my mic is off there. We've captured the question and our assistant superintendent curriculum is not here this evening. I know she's been very instrumental obviously in, in helping develop these different options. And so again, it has another detailed workout in which we answer what she's back and we're able to, to work with her. So we're capturing a lot of questions as well. We're trying to answer as much as we can, but we're working through some of the details. Again, I think that date is likely to change and that's what we're discussing at that committee meeting. That if we are talking about, if you start it back at August 7th, that would change as well. And we would also make a commitment to having a time before this new commitment date where we would give people an opportunity to ask those sorts of very specific operational questions and you'd be better prepared to answer them.
Hi, I'm Mason Benjamin. I live at 35 Park Court. I'm going to be a sophomore this year. So I have a few questions, particularly when it comes to the remote learning option. It seems to me a little bit worrying that students and their families are forced to make a decision about their learning option for the entire semester when the situation that we have seen can change in a month. And then I think students should be able to kind of review their learning option at the very end each quarter or possibly each interim period. I understand that could be difficult to schedule around, but it just seems like a lot to ask students and their families to make a decision that quickly. And then when I went to your page, it said face shield, acceptable face covering option. But I thought at the last meeting we went over the fact that face shields, they don't really cover the droplets that could cause COVID. So I think they're a good supplementary thing with another face covering. But on the other hand, I don't know if they're actually adequate. And then I can understand the reasoning for providing mask breaks, but I fear masks breaks would undo all the hard work we do during the rest of the day. The only place I could see masks break making sense would be outside. Teachers already know how difficult it is to maintain order during a fire drill. And a mask break could be equally difficult. Also, theater events like lunch, but it also undo all the hard work that is being done during the rest of the day. So I think maybe we should look to, at least in the high school, relocate certain students to the outdoor gym and then the main gym. And finally, I think as someone who's asthmatic, there should be no exceptions when it comes to mask learning because unfortunately, virus does not care about health complications sometimes. And unfortunately, everybody is a vector for coronavirus transmission. And so why are students just staying on a live stream for six hours a day? That's mean, I think maybe a bit too much of students and teachers because it's good to disenfranchise families that are not lucky enough to have a device. And for each and every student, pre-recorded videos may possibly work better. But overall, I just wanted to thank you all. I know this is very difficult, but I hope we can review some of the stuff.
Good evening. I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work and tired dedication to making this right. I know it's going to be very difficult for everyone. I totally understand that you guys can't answer questions this evening. So I wanted to kind of just raise my question and force a suggestion of just things that came about. I was, and I know the building principals are indicating to this, but I'm hoping that there can be some like variances in what's like expected for mask wearing for kids of different ages. I think it's very different what a preschooler and the kids at their grade can handle versus a high school kid. So I'm hoping that, you know, you guys are allowing for some creating of those expectations. The other thing that I think our state and our country is kind of missing with all COVID is a focus on our health and how to build up our community. And so my hope is that we can continue with specials like PE and health class and talking about mental health, getting the kids outside as possible to build up our community and helping kids learn healthy habits and routines and practice those. The masks are one tool that we have to help with that. That's not our own tool. So hopefully that can not be forgotten for us this year too. I think that's it. I think I grabbed some of the help in this though. So thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing.
Well, this is coming up. You know, if you are on any of the campuses, if all in the nice weather, I'll pass. You will see teachers outside teaching. I think teachers love. I mean, I would love to keep my class outside and I'm hopeful that you'll see even more of that because it is a safer place to be. So hopefully we'll have really good weather like all the way through November and we'll be able to take advantage and have our classes outside, you know, when it makes sense. So I think it's a great suggestion. Not your mask might feel any cool we have during the morning.
Stephanie Benjamin, 35 Park Court, and I don't really know him. But I think that my son Mason and I, we have these discussions all the time. And something that I think is really important for us to remember, I have a, my other son just graduated and it's amazing the resilience of these kids that have gone through all this. They have a lot more resilience than, I think it bothered me as a mom that he didn't get to go to prom more than he can. But the big thing that I'm worried about is I have a son that doesn't want to come to school because he's asthmatic. So he is going to do, he wants to do online and you've heard him talk twice. And you understand my challenge is to change his mind. But my thing is if you're just going to have a video of what these teachers are doing, I don't think it's going to work because, you know, when this all started and I started going on Zoom classes because I'm an extrovert and I like to talk to people, Zoom is really fun for the first two weeks. And now I have to, you know, I don't want my minister to hear this, but I have to say I zoned out a lot during Zoom by the study. So I just really worry because six or seven hours studying in front of the computer with not even Zoom, but just kind of watching the whiteboard, I don't think it's going to give our kids the education that they deserve. And like everybody has said, this is a heck of a thing that you guys have to decide. But I just wanted you to know where I'm coming from. Thank you very much and thanks for listening to my son every time.
Other comments, other participation, if anybody has any?
From a little bit since we were there, of course. My question, and I can email this, but I'm here, so. And we got talked earlier. So if there is positive testing and whoever's been diagnosed or, pardon my diagnosis, or maybe quarantine, thank you. Who, is there a teacher who would be responsible then for homeschooling or virtually schooling and whatever? Who's going to be held responsible for that? What are those kids going to be looking at? Because I think it's going to, it's just going to be happening. I have a friend, for example, in her neighborhood here in Spring Grove, we're all recently diagnosed. And so it's just going to keep happening. And so I think that we all need to know what that's going to look like when it happens. Because I know it's going to happen in a week. And how many people are going to be affected before it shuts down? I think those are the things that we need to, before I put my kid in, who wants to go. And then I'm like, oh, well, three weeks in, we're all going to be done anyway. So those are the points. So those are my questions.
Thank you for talking. Thank you.
Do you have the health decision of like when this school actually shuts down, shuts down? They really didn't give us a poll number, but it's kind of going to be like a big call to.
Purple's got a kind of.
Yeah, but then if we don't have touchers, that would be.
It could be a specific school scenario. Just hits our school side for example.
Senator Bauer, don't you worry. This question was first one that has been here today. He wants to know, are we going to have special lifting? And if we do have a in person, can we also be in virtually now instead? And then the other one is my question. In your guideline framework under masks, there was some weird out sentence that said something about we will wear masks if we're red or purple and how each time, if you use a shirt or a belt. Is that only if they're not using a shirt and a belt or they're for orange now, so are we not going back with that? Or?
Kind of changed today.
Want to know that supersede everything or?
No, but that's not correct because our policy says we're in masks all these different times. It's not just red and purple. That was.
That way we're going to be backwards or whatever you're wearing.
But that, that's not, but to her point, that red and purple shouldn't be in there because it makes it sound like it's only red and purple. And our policy says we're masked unless it's, we can't socially, I mean, like if the teachers or staff feels that there's enough social distance, then they can have a mask, right? But. Yeah, it doesn't, it's very confusing if you read that. It doesn't match up with our policy.
I think we captured, I've captured that feedback. I had a discussion about that last night. We passed on it, Mr. March. I've captured yours all. Thank you.
All right, Senator Renam, Staff Member, is it okay if I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay. On the first page of the mask policy, the bottom paragraph, it says face covering shall not include surgical masks. Are these acceptable if several people wearing these type, are those acceptable? Because I would call these surgical masks. Sorry.
It's. That's an acceptable mask. I think they're meaning the.
Like the, it's not the five ones. Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Other caller participation?
I'm on three, two, four. Let's see, I imagine that's true there because I think you're a lot of education. So I see it firsthand. I'm on my, I've been working through this all day. Question I have is for kids. A lot of kids we see, we're staying in the ER. They're really upset that we're saying, I'm not saying all kids. That they may see their friends, they're depressed, a lot of them are on medication. It's just real sad. Another thing is little kids, we see a lot of little kids, they are, we've seen them in masks. And a lot of them are getting struck or they're getting other things with the mask because they're saturated and they're touching their mask all day long. They're little kids. I'm not saying high schoolers. So I can see, you know, a lot of kids getting sick, even if they're in the school, just because they're touching their face and touching their mask. And so the little ones, I don't even know how, I'm sure they're aware, especially if you're learning the first second. So there has to be some way, way with those little kids, you know, so that's, that's.
Other participation?
I think I saw what they are giving, selling central streets to. So this is more along the lines of our social, it was talking about shortage of teachers. So this is a move to thought in terms of, at least for online learning. And not thinking street rules is too wide, but thinking as a whole county to have a group of teachers which can have a mission or string over for eleven on. And then help them sort of remove the students from the schools if you have shortage of those teachers. Because unlike in last year, teachers can only teach from five ways, a remote school, a remote learning, a teacher can teach more than, you know, a lot more. So just to, you know, in case you have shortage of remote teachers.
Thank you. Public participation under Boston, let's say three point three. Okay. When we moved to three point four, I think we have maybe four boards. Three point five, then special about four businesses. All right, now moving to the business portion again, to the board for our treasurer, Ms. Swyte, Dr. Phil, our financials.
Right, I'm gonna try. Can I, can you hear me a little bit in a second? When I turn nine on a six inch echo. The first item I have for you guys tonight is June, financials. At the end of the school year, we ended our cash balance for our general fund at just over $10.6 million. And that equates to about seventy days of upward cash on hand. And our cash balance did improve of what we believed we were gonna have to win in May by $472,000. There was several things that contributed to that. One of them was Hospital 164, originally where the governor cut our funding back in May. We were reduced to 42% for the year. And then through Hospital 164, they came back and capped it at 6%. So in doing that, we received 2.2% of that reduction back before we closed the books for a year, which gave us $226,000 back. We also received a $152,000 refund from Bureau of State to help out with COVID related costs. So even with our revenue loss that we did end up having with pay for sustain fees and preschool tuition. And then also some facility rental fee, normal facility rental revenue that we received. Even with those reductions due to that, we still ended in a positive in our other revenue of $55,000. And then the other items that contributed to our positive cash balance was a reduction in supply costs for some end of the year activities that we normally do. Also we had a reduction in capital and some other expenses. As well as overtime, extended days, some field trip costs that we had and personnel savings, summer help. We used our summer help a lot for this year. So that did improve our cash balance. However, even with that cash balance being improved, we still did not have any revenue for the whole school year in order to cover all of our expenses. So we did still deficit spend in the school year of $404,000. So even though it improved our cash balance in the short term, our long term financial outlook still does not change. So that is the financials. I also wrote it on the board docs and I also sent the detailed explanation to the board over this week. So that was my first item that I have. My second item is a donation from James Huff for $500 to be a baseball program. We received it then, so if it was something like that, it could turn out. So $500, what do you think?
Yeah, I see a motion to approve. Yeah, it was four point one and four point two. So. Any discussion or questions?
Stupi? Anderson? Back?
Sorry, I need to see, is this where the E S C can grab both?
No.
No votes?
Okay, yes.
Are they good?
Yes.
And then I have one. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I got you.
I know where I said.
Okay, now one other item. I think four point four is the approval of the fiscal 20 audit and doubt conversion completed by Plattenberg Associates. That is, this is the year four of a five year state bid contract for our audit.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? Any discussion or questions?
Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Back?
Yes.
Palaja?
Yes.
Thank you. Swyte? Now moving to Ms. Hester for the interim superintendent, second.
President, members of the board, I would like to present to you item five point one, which is our July personnel report. Hiring continues, resignations continue despite COVID, but we are almost completely hired up. I think we have one part-time science position open at the high school. And we did, I'm very excited to announce, secure a last year today. So that was huge. It was a bright start of the day.
Small victories.
So five point one is the personnel report for July.
Five point two.
Five point two is the mask policy.
No, I think that's the extended days.
A little heavy on you. Yes, so five point two is a resolution to approve extended days for Andrea Cook. She has been working nonstop beyond her regular calendar year through the COVID. Five point three is the mask policy. And four is the option.
All right, item five point four seeks the approval of five point one to five point three. Is there a motion to approve?
To move.
Discussion or questions?
I do have a question about the face covering policy. And I apologize that I didn't touch this earlier in work session. There's been a number of different things moving around. I noticed in this version, I know we had some version control issues as we were trying to work through this and so I was texting Mr. Marshall about it. That we've removed. I'm trying to get the different versions of it. There was a second sentence at the start that talks about when the policy goes into effect. The version, the version of this policy is in the event of the state of Ohio, Warren County, and where the city of St. Louis is declared and that is defined by the state of Ohio. I noticed that's not in the one that's on the board docs.
I saw that. I added it to what will be, become the one, but it didn't make it to board.
I just want to make sure we have, because I think I thought it was important about this policy, that fingers crossed we're not in this situation.
Yes.
There's not our policy that we're going to be requiring masks. You know, that it is, this policy takes effect during this very specific situation. And I just happened to notice the one that I was looking at, board docs didn't have that. So, because I just wanted to make a clarification that that is.
Someone sent me the fact.
Yeah, I'll send it to you right now.
It's like all policy, it's the same version that's out there that does have the sentence that just talks about when this policy takes effect. I just wanted to make sure that was captured. And I apologize that I didn't catch that in the work session to correct it before.
Any other discussion or questions?
From Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson? Back? Yes, Palaja?
Yes. Yes.
And finally, five point five and five point six are athletic report for July and then our athletic camp and club report. And remember that one is filled in continuously throughout the summer.
Yeah, motion to approve item five point seven, which is, have you approved five point five and five point six? Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I do have a question about that. I still am clear as to why, since we did not have athletic camps for our younger students. Why we have students listed here, high school students listed here, they shouldn't be getting any payment for anything, it seems. Like why would we be approving high school students for baseball at this point?
I thought that was a camp.
And yeah, because that's a camp as well. No, it's not for me. So we have high school students that helped with like a junior high camp to get paid for it?
Yeah, I think it was for seven.
Seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, I can't remember. Exactly. There was a camp.
So this is like senior high football players that come to help in the junior high and you get paid?
No, it's our students that are attending the camps because they're allowed to be participating.
I'm gonna interrupt that work. Yeah, we would have some of our students help.
Why are we giving students here? That's what I'm wondering.
I'm assuming that's because they work.
They're, yeah. And was the camp and they'll get a nomination from the coach who was running the camp. And whoever's running the camp will send a nomination form to personnel that says they did, in fact, improve this job and listen how much they're to be paid. So that wouldn't even happen. It wouldn't get on the morning report until it's already done. But now, I'm pretty sorry, they're gonna approve by whoever was running the camp. So these people actually.
The camp.
It's not exactly school.
No, we have three. This is the same way we pay other camp workers.
Yeah, okay, yes. Okay, thank you. All right.
Yep. Any other discussion or questions?
Stupi?
Anderson.
Anderson? Back?
Yes.
Palaja?
Yes.
Okay. Six point, moving down to six point one, our directory of special education.
Yes, Emily Hill is not here to speak, but Sarah, her, it's going so bad.
Thank you, Sarah. That's Hester. Mr. President, members of the board, we just have one agenda item tonight. We're asking for approval for our annual special education contracts and those are all listed in the attachments on the board agenda.
Is there a motion to approve? Any discussion or questions?
So I did have a lot of questions and Carol was able to answer, answer most of them, which was wonderful. I just, I'm very happy to hear that as Carrie looks back at her, it's our role that we can evaluate. I just feel like we have all the pot of money going to the E S Cs that, and just, I know I sound like a broker record, I say this every summer. But I'm just curious if we could be looking at this work differently to not put that much money there and to take some of these positions in-house and look at it differently. As, as I was just looking through the board county E S C, it just feels like, I mean, I'm all about the collaborative work if we need that. But I appreciate that Carrie told me that that's one of the things you're gonna dig into. So, you know, that's something I don't know yet in itself, but it just feels like a lot of money is going there with our cost and team. And I feel like we need to continue to dig into that. So the other piece is, as I've been doing contracts with my work, there's been a lot of COVID statements in there. That if COVID impacts our work, the grant might look different. Are, is there anything with any of our work within E S C that if there looks different because students are remote? That we don't have to pay as much because we're not getting a full service?
Carrie, I can speak to that a little bit. One of the things that, not very extensively, and Emily obviously might know more. But one of the things that Warren County E S C has been very straightforward about from the beginning is in the event that our district goes remote. They would give us the option for, to either remotely, or they would go remote. That we would have the option at that point to take on the remote instruction for those students or pay, continue to pay them to do that. Obviously, that would be a case by case basis and really depend on the resources that they're offering that student, if that's something we can match even remotely. So that would be an individual decision, but they have put that out there as an option. So it would be something we'd have to talk through case by case.
That's great to hear. Because I think there could be situations that our staff has different availability. And if we could get that on and not be constrained to a contract, that's great to hear. Okay, those are my two questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did want to bring something. I think the last time we looked at this, part of the reason was leveraging E S C was because we were using fractional labor. That ultimately would have caused us more hiring than house and had to have those people travel across the district. Basically pay for windshield time versus leveraging E S C that we only paid for when they're in the building doing service. And maybe we only paying for, you know, an hour. And then the rocket books for us and they can go and drive somewhere else versus having a full time employee. So I did want to say that, you know, last time we had a this responsibility standing, I think it's a preferred.
There's some of those, but there's also some special needs students services. And I'm just curious if there's any other options out there with our social communication or $340,000 transition living, $216,000. Those are big ticket things. And I know there's a lot of, that's not just something we can do with a classroom work next door. But I'm just curious if there are some things that we could look differently and possibly look at any other options to me. And there's, there's a lot of things, this is a large contract. So I know that for some things, there are, we need to share the services and that's part of the purpose of the E S C. But I just think it's worth digging into and exploring if there are some other options that could save some money and still give students great services.
I'm assuming I have one to make sure of, but as he comes on board, you know, file that away and note that. And obviously continue to make sure that not just this, but all of our resources that work, that will work, need to be as efficient as possible with those expenditures.
Any other questions or discussions?
Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson? Back?
Yes.
Palaja?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I'll move now into section seven, board reports, comments, questions, answers, future considerations. Ms. Hester, I think you will probably strongly lobby against item seven point one.
I didn't know that was on the agenda.
Yeah. So this is actually a resolution that approves Carrie Hester, I don't think that's in there, I think you got a choice. A resolution approving Carrie Hester in terms superintendent from 12:00 AM on August 1st, 2020. And then at 12:00 AM on August 2nd, 2020, in order to accommodate the new superintendent's contract that has been approved to start on August 2nd, 2020. Ms. Hester, she appropriated.
Twenty-four hours.
In terms superintendent for DMV for August 1st, 2020. Yes, apparently legally I'm told that we're required to have a superintendent. And so Mr. Hope's contract that we approved previously starts on August 2nd. And so Mr. Hook's contract that we approved previously starts on August 2nd, and so we do need to take care of this housekeeping item. And Carrie has graciously agreed, all joking aside, to obtain as the interim superintendent for one additional day. And so this resolution seeks to let to make that official. Is there a motion to approve?
Fire.
Any discussion or questions?
Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson? Back? Palaja?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item 7. I've been hearing your call, so we'll just move on. So item 7.2 is the approval of a step and two-and-a-half percent increase for the treasurer for the 2021 school year. This is something we've taken action previously as a board, on our other administrators, and we just needed to make sure that we took action on Mrs. Floyd as well for the 2021 school year. And so this increases consistently what we've done for the other administrators. I just wasn't active upon at that time because we do the superintendent and treasurer separately. And obviously, Mr. Hook having on board, we addressed, you know, his competition. So we think that contract, but we needed to take this step to obviously make sure that we are recognizing Mrs. Floyd for all of the work that she does as well for our district. And I don't know that there's anybody that I would trust more in this order to help balance all of the different things that we have to do from a financial standpoint to district, and she does a remarkable job and is a tremendous advocate for us. And so with that said, I would bring this approval of a step and two-and-a-half percent increase to the board. So is there a motion to approve item 7.2?
Seven.
Any discussion or questions?
I just also like to reiterate your comments, Mr. Palaja. I think Ms. Floyd has done a tremendous job for us. She's certainly brought a lot of continuity to the district, you know, through some troubled waters. And, you know, we always come through, squeak clean with our audits, and that's obviously something that the board and the community like to see. You know, at the same time, she's done an amazing job with a very tight budget that I'm sure everyone in this audience is familiar with, we certainly are with the board. So again, my sincere thanks for keeping us humming along with, with our resources and up there, the board and the community. Thank you.
I'd like to add that she does a great job. I am not a finance person. She does a fabulous job with any question that I ever quote, and I quote a lot of questions. So she just does a great job of explaining, and well, any kind of, if anybody has a question, she is a golden door of explaining. She wants people to know, get your dollars, and she wants people to know where our dollars are going. So she just does a fabulous job, and there's never ever a question of whether we can trust her numbers and what she's doing with the dollars in the future. So I so appreciate what she's done as a treasurer, so fully support this.
Any other discussion or questions?
Let me ask that. I'm sorry, I always, I'm sorry. So it's something else that, there were some questions around, like, there were districts that had to make massive cuts whenever it happened with COVID. And the reason that we were able to not have the massive cuts was because of the two ladies who came to the table. They, over the last nine months, did a, what do you call it, cost containment plan? And they had done that before we knew any of this was going to happen. And they did this to put us in a better spot financially, and we had no idea this was coming. Had we not done that, there would have been massive cuts. So that was the brainchild of those two working together and doing whatever we could to save the district money while still providing your students wonderful education. So I just appreciate what they did preemptively, but it ended up really saving us during the typical time. Yes, yes.
How are you working?
Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson? Back? Yes, Palaja?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item 7.3 is similar to what we talked about in 5.2 with Ms. Cook, but as we've acknowledged, it did several points of difference, meaning there are a lot of people that have been living and dreaming this return to school plan over the summer at the expense of their personal days. And that includes our interim superintendent, our treasurer, in addition to Ms. Cook, that we talked about earlier. So this resolution actually seeks to be very similar to Ms. Cook, to allow them to carry over the 10 days of my new certification days for the 2019-2020 contract year due to the 2020-2021 contract year, due to the work and extra hours that have been required due to the 2019 pandemic. And so this resolution allows them to be made whole for the fact that they have a great personal expense of their time, even if they're committed to trying to move this district forward in a very challenging time. Is there a motion to approve item 7.3?
Seven.
Any discussion or questions? I've said, I've said it again, but I just thank you to both of you. And I know you, again, it is a great personal expense, because I've seen it even on the days that you're supposedly off, you're still working. And I know this doesn't necessarily make you whole, but hopefully it's a step in at least acknowledging that all of you guys have had to do during this extra period of time. So again, I just wanted to formally extend my thanks.
Thank you.
Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson? Back? Yes, Palaja?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item 7.4, we'll move through announcements and future considerations from the board. Ms. Hester?
I hope you guys are staying firm tonight, because we really are listening to you, and we are working hard to do what we can to make it the safest place for your students if you choose to attend for the teachers and staff, because they are going to be here, or the majority of them are. So we appreciate your presence, and hopefully this extra time will help us set it up for even more success. Because at the end of the day, we want this to be successful, whether your students are home or not, or whether your students are in classrooms here in our building or not. So it's gonna, we have a lot of really smart people, and smart teachers, and smart parents that are giving us great ideas, and caregivers that are giving us great ideas. So I was talking with somebody, that talked to somebody, a board member in another district, and they were talking about how safe some of the emails were. And I will say, I mean, really, really, I said, "I really wouldn't sit up with emails we've got." Really, you guys have just done such a great job of being encouraging, but really giving us great suggestions and data around why we feel the way we do, even if somebody's over here and somebody's over here. Great reasons behind it, which gives us good things to think about, as we're helping you through this report to what best and safest for everybody. So I just ask you, thinking I did last board meeting, to be respectful to those people around you and help your kids do the things that we don't all think the same. And we've got, this is a great time to instill in them those qualities of how to treat people differently than you. Thank you.
I just want to thank the community for coming in tonight also with their questions. Hopefully you'll have some answers or something, but maybe not.
We'll get there. Yeah, I'll reiterate what Ms. Babs said. I'm, it's, from one hand, I'm sure it's extremely frustrating. We may have to be on board education for answers to things that normally would not even be questions. But, you know, again, it's not only board members, but certain parents were with you on that. They're certainly, I think we're holding back that you guys don't know at the moment. But I, again, I do think that when we do get the administrators back, all the administrators back, again, things are going to really start to accelerate in a way that you're going to get some satisfactory answers. You know, you may not like all of them, but at least you're going to have answers that you can ultimately make decisions on. You know, and that's the other thing, is, you know, Ms. Babs said, you get, I think, you've got more emails from us than all my time on the board mind, which is good. You know, you don't want to lose this. But at the same time, if you kind of look at the spectrum of emails that we've gotten, again, what Ms. Babs said, some people are way over here, some people are way over here, and we're not going to get everybody that we're sat here, I just guarantee it. But we're actually going to work, you know, very hard to make sure our kids and our staff are safe and healthy, and then work backwards from that to fill the rest and make sure it's quality education. But it's going to be tough. And again, nothing else that's not approved yet, but assuming we can push school back, we think there's understanding as to what we're doing ahead, that I think the product that you see afterwards is going to be that much better the way the board can do that. So again, thanks for hanging with us, and certainly everyone that spoke tonight, certainly appreciated. Everybody emails, certainly appreciated. So we'll get your answers soon.
Yeah, I would, I don't have much more to add than what's already been said throughout the evening. But yeah, again, I would express my thanks to everybody that's taken time out of the day to be here, and what I said earlier, what it's about, and Mr. Hook's opinion as well. I just said before, we're strengthened by this sort of community input, and hearing from all of you. And I do want to say thank you to all the folks that have taken time to express their opinions. And again, it has been extremely constructive and professional, and I really appreciate that. And we are listening, and I hope that that is that, not by some of the conversation we've seen this evening, and how we are trying to make the best decisions we can as quickly as we can. And we want to get these right, and it's too important. And so we want to make sure that we're working through this in a thoughtful fashion with our full team, and I appreciate the patience with us as we do, as we do that. But our intent is to get you those answers in advance of having to make a decision as we talk. And I think we're committed to doing that, and we'll have more information as soon as we move forward. But that is our intent, to try and get you as much of that information and those answers before you have to make that decision. But again, thank you for taking the time to be here, thank you, Mr. Hook. He's, you know, not officially on the clock yet. And I know I referenced it earlier, but has taken some vacation days to really engage and dive into this member of mine. Didn't have to do that.
Like a vacation?
Yeah, it's how everybody wants to spend their vacation. Yeah, so, but I mean, I think that's a small advantage to this district and the fact that he's willing to do that and willing to come before he asks you to really engage and be a part of this. And so I appreciate you making that, that sacrifice. And again, as we've talked about in several of the different items that we've approved today, I'll thank Ms. Hester, Miss Floyd, and Ms. Cook. We did some things to try and, try and make you somewhat whole. But I know that we can't do that 100% because you guys have given, you know, so much of your time and energy to this district over the last seven months. And we still have a lot of work to do. Again, I wanted to say thank you for all of that. So I always like to also acknowledge and say thank you, Mr. Huff, for the donation to the baseball program as well, and for the people in the community that come alongside and support this district. And I mean, we had some offers at the last meeting, and I think this community shows time and time again that they're willing to come alongside the schools and partner with us and support us. And so I appreciate Mr. Huff's donation to a baseball program. So with that said, and I think that concludes everything from the board perspective. Any other announcements or future considerations? I'm here.
I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to serve as interim. This is my last board meeting in this seat. I'll be out there.
Maybe not, you may have a special one.
Yeah, that's true, a good so-called special one to talk about the conversation. It may not be off the hook just yet.
We may have one on the first, there's a deadline for last.
Yeah, we'll make that August 1st a interim day.
But I do, I would thank them, I would be the best eleven once in my life.
Now I know you're lying. Thank you for stepping back to earlier thoughts. Okay, item 8.1, is there any motion to adjourn? Any discussion or questions?
Stupi?
Yes.
Anderson? Back? Yes, Palaja?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.